You were in on that at the time. We got six weeks ago.
We, uh, no.
By the time you, you had it started.
All right, um, let me just introduce the bond hearing article first. Yep. Uh, we have three public hearings tonight, the public hearings that we've called the Silicate Agency, I would say forty, which is town meetings, and I would say thirty-two, which is the budget law. Uh, the first one that we'll be discussing will be the bond article for broadband service, which is specific to our say thirty-three, which covers the authorization of bonds in excess of $100,000 if they allow purposes for the business, did, did it's a penalty for that. Uh, the proposed bond being discussed is allowed for our say thirty-three, three broadband proposed broadband infrastructure, as defined in our say thirty-eight, thirty-nine. I, uh, we, to repurchase or extract it in areas not served by an existing broadband network or line. It also includes underserved areas. Um, we're going to have members of the Tel-Tec committee, the Wana, Tim Muscles, and Joe Ben, and Frank Clark. They'll be presenting a little bit, answering any questions that need to be answered. We're also going to have Ron Costa, who's Consolidated Communications, he's the Vice President of Consumer Products, he'll be able to answer some questions. He's going to introduce his background. If you have questions, we'll all get it. Now, after the leaving presentations made, I will accept questions in common to the public, now directed to the appropriate people. If you wish to speak, is there anybody interested in speaking on or asking questions about the bond? No, but, but all right. I have a sign-in sheet. If you haven't signed in, I'd appreciate it if you do, it makes it a little bit easier for me to direct questions, make sure the persons who signed in get to speak first. So at this point, I will open the public hearing, not invite the bond markets, not the question rooms.
Hi, I'm Phil with the Tel-Tec committee, and we've got a couple slides that we're going to walk through, show them a little bit of what this is, what it's about, what we're talking about, also, uh, what the public benefit is, we've got a couple slides on that, and then we've got presentation that the folks at Consolidated are going to be able to show to us, and then they'll be able to answer some questions. We've also brought some samples of the equipment that gets used, so that people can see the actual equipment that gets used for this. So Jim, if you want to pick out this Tim Muscles, but I think he's got a few slides to start with, just to get things going.
Okay, but this last slide, but, uh, I gave a, I think I have a slightly different version of this presentation on February twenty-first, these calculations, and this is the use of a public-private partnership to actually do the project. Uh, Ridge will, uh, Ridge served and unserved, Phil, you talk about this slide here.
So, the served and unserved, the FCC standard says that to be considered served, you have to have download speed of 25 megabits and an upload speed of three megabits. We've gone through the addresses in town, we did a request for information, got that information back, and we know that we've got more than ninety percent, as you can see, it says ninety-two points up, and more than ninety percent of town does not meet the guidelines for served. Therefore, we can go ahead and use this new, uh, bill that was passed to, to bonding, to do the public-private partnership that enables us to go forward, to pursue getting some better internet service here in town for everybody. So, I think that's a fair summary of that slide, so.
Uh, the-
Quick question.
Yeah, uh, do you, are possibly wrong, there's a grant possibility, and I may all forget if I don't ask, there's a grant possibility from USDA that just came up, but their number is ten. And I don't know how much of the town, ten instead of twenty-five, which I think is really bizarre because it's a federal program.
Right.
Um, do you know if we have a lot of the town that's under ten?
Eight hundred and ninety-seven.
That's probably not enough.
Now, the upload speed is also a factor.
Yeah, but that, yeah, it's the-
Very few people have three.
Yeah, we'll have to keep, you know, check those numbers, but it's a USDA grant.
Yep.
Sorry, I just, Laurie just saw it today, and I thought I might-
I didn't know they had come back on, I know that they had been on previously.
Last year.
Yeah, didn't know that they had come back on.
Okay. We just got notification today.
Moving along.
Yep.
Um, how do you use Senate Bill one seventy? Uh, straight, pretty straightforward, spelled out in the legislation, so the town creates a request for information, RFI, and it sends those RFI to the internet service providers, ISP. Interested ISPs, according to the law, get sixty days to respond to the request for information. Town reviews the RFI responses from the ISPs, the town then sends out a request for proposals, or RFP, uh, to everyone who responded to the RFI. Town reviews proposals submitted by ISP, by the ISPs, and the proposals may not be selected by the town. Town's under no obligation to select any proposal submitted. Uh, but if it does select one, then negotiations, uh, with the selected ISP begin, and then the town creates a bond article, uh, for bonding to do the project. Now, in the second part of this, uh, the town needs to, uh, conduct a public hearing on bonding warrant article, and then the town needs to vote on the bonding warrant article. If passed, the town begins the bonding process. Uh, the town, kind of, at the same time, uh, the town negotiates contract with the selected ISP, and the project doesn't start until there's a signed contract and bonding is in place. Uh, the project duration, uh, could be anywhere from twelve to twenty-four months. Uh, the town owns the bonded assets, because the town cannot buy, bond for anything it doesn't own, uh, but it can sell or lease them after the bond is retired, which is typically a period of twenty years. Uh, where is Ridge at now with Senate Bill one seventy? Uh, a year ago, in April, the board of selection approved the Tel-Tec committee to begin the Senate Bill one seventy process. Uh, the town sent out requests for informational letters to the ISPs in June, the Tel-Tec committee, uh, reviewed the data from the ISPs who responded to the RFI in September. In, in October, the Tel-Tec committee drafted an RFP, request for proposal, uh, and we also held a, a public hearing similar to this, uh, in the month of October, to discuss the Senate one, you know, one seventy process. The Tel-Tec committee sent out the RFPs in November, we're given a month to respond, and then the Tel-Tec committee reviews the proposals received, we received two from CCI Consolidated Communications Incorporated and from Y Valley. Tel-Tec recommended the CCI proposal to the board of selection, also in December. Uh, the board of selection accepted the proposal from CCI in December, and just recently, the board of selection and, and Tel-Tec committee had a meeting with Consolidated Communications. Um, the board of selection schedules a public hearing on the town budget and broadband bonding in January, and the town begins work, preparatory work, uh, with the bond council in January. And, and fairly, fairly distant to the, kind of the timeline of it, town presents a public benefit calculation for bonding to build broadband, this is required in Senate Bill one seventy, and that chairman of motor will do that when I'm finished here with these slides. And then the bond warrant article, uh, we discussed at the town delivered a meeting, and on, uh, March the tenth, uh, the town will vote on the bond warrant article, and sixty percent, uh, of voters must approve the bond warrant article for it to pass. Uh, this is not the first time I will say this, but no property taxes will be used to repay the bond. I'll say that again, no property taxes will be used to repay the bond. Uh, the project starts in thirty days with a signed contract with Consolidated, and when bonding is in place. Uh, area towns that are also using Senate Bill one seventy, they're not the only ones, Chesterfield was the first, they've already bonded, and Consolidated has built up a brand new fiber optic network. Uh, Dublin is preparing to bond in, uh, this, uh, spring, Ridge preparing to bond in, uh, this spring, Walpole preparing to bond in, uh, Westmoreland preparing to bond in, uh, three other towns, Francis Town, Hancock, and Harrisville, all appear to be in the request for information and request for proposal stage. Senate Bill one seventy is, is just touched, like, it was just like a flashpoint for the towns in the Manaduck region to, like, jump on this, and Chesterfield was the pioneer, they went first, when everyone saw what was happening, uh, it was going to be good in Chesterfield, they got cranky enough to do it themselves. Now, bonding for broadband in Ridge, uh, the town will bond for approximately two point six million for what's called the town-funded network. And Consolidated will contribute, uh, approximately two point five million, uh, to build the new network for Ridge. The term of the bond will likely be twenty years, and the bond is to be paid by a nine dollar and fifty cents per month infrastructure fee on CCI broadband fiber customers bill. So, if you keep your DSL, you don't pay the, the, uh, infrastructure fee. If all you have is wireline phone service from CCI, you do not pay the infrastructure fee. The town will own this last mile network when it's completed, uh, and the town will sign a contract with, uh, Consolidated to operate, monitor, maintain, and repair the network. Uh, broadband benefits for Ridge, broadband fiber, it sets the table for economic development in town. Broadband fiber helps existing home and small businesses. Broadband fiber commits residents to telecommute to jobs. Broadband fiber increases real estate property values in town. Broadband fiber is an important feature to have when selling your home. Broadband fiber improves access to online learning. Broadband fiber is increasingly useful in healthcare delivery, and broadband fiber provides voice, video, and data services with virtually unlimited capacity. We can get better broadband in Ridge.
Yay.
The actual Senate Bill one seventy is our best tool for improving broadband service for everyone in Ridge. Can we ask a question to this one?
No, no, yeah, I'm kind of old, or something, uh, you all set, uh, Tim? No, I'm good. So, yeah, one of the pieces is discovery and documenting what the public benefit, and so let's go ahead, if you can hit the next slide there. Okay. There's an article, Wall Street Journal, that mentioning a study that was done by University of, of Colorado. This same study was also used by Chesterfield when they were doing their, uh, public benefit calculation. And what it showed was that they were seeing that sale prices on houses that have access to high-speed internet connections, it can add as much as three percent in some cases to the selling price of a house. You can imagine, it makes it much more desirable to have that. So, if we can hit that next slide, so, we ran, uh, through also, that a study said that in rural area, they saw that the premium was a little bit lower, and it came in at about two and a half percent. So, if you want to hit that last slide, we'll just say, so, basically, we've got ninety-one percent unserved in town, twenty-four eighty-five for addresses, you figure two and a half percent added to the sale, two hundred thousand dollar home would be five thousand dollars. So, multiplying that out shows the total public benefit would then be twelve million and four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars if all the homes were sold. The public benefit to the homeowners is just about ten million dollars if you're talking about, even if it was only half of this, it's still an awful lot much more than the two million five seventy-nine, one twenty-five that would be gone before. So, we're getting a lot more benefit out of the fiber in terms of this. So, those are the slides that I had on what the public benefit calculation is, and Carl, if you want to just address the question.
Oh, well, uh, some people fear that if their property value goes up, they're going to pay more in taxes, uh, but this is serving everyone in town, everyone gets that benefit. Uh, in terms of a house in Ridge would now have a little greater value, um, that means our four million dollar budget is divided by everyone's taxes, if everyone goes up of three percent, then nobody pays more in taxes, your tax rate is just reduced slightly. So the amount you're paying in taxes as a rate for your value of your house just goes down.
All right, so that covers the public benefit calculation, so, can we stop here? Uh, want me to take any questions, or?
Uh, why don't we, uh, take all the questions at once, there are Ron Costa here from Consolidated Communications. Flip over here a little bit.
Because we only have broadband here, you know. You're getting that flipped over, I will do a quick bit about-
You're in the library at the computer room?
Yeah.
Please, there, please.
That's a good job.
So, good evening, everybody, my name is Rob Costa with Consolidated Communications, uh, my official title, I think, officially, is Vice President of Product Management, uh, my responsibility is all of our consumer and small business products across the company. With me tonight is Mike Tannen, uh, Mike runs all of our field operations and construction crews, um, through almost all of New Hampshire and Vermont. Want to take you through a little bit of kind of, of a project forward. Uh, Phil and Tim did a really good job of kind of talking about public benefit in the process they've been through to this point. I'm going to take a little bit of time to talk about kind of what happens next, assuming a positive vote at public meetings. Before I do that, though, I do want to do just a couple of seconds on a quick introduction on Consolidated. We bought the Fairpoint network in two thousand sev- uh, two thousand seventeen. Since then, our goal really has been, how do we drive broadband faster across all of Northern New England? Um, it's a big territory, we're making incremental progress across that. SV one seventy, Tim is pointing to the lightning rod, it, uh, so what we're doing here in New Hampshire, nobody else across the country is doing. We've talked to, um, Georgia, Colorado, Alabama, Utah, tons of states that are calling on, what you guys doing, and, you know, why is it working for you? Uh, will it work in some of those states? I don't know, but surely it's working here in Chesterfield, it's a really great example of that. So, I will tell you, in terms of service quality, that's been a big focus of ours, two things that we've really been trying to focus on, one is service quality, we're adding more technicians, we're adding more field resources, we're adding more customer service resources, I'm hoping you're seeing some benefit in that, it's a big ship and it takes time to turn, it's something we really truly are committed to, but I know people have issues. So, if you're having problems, if your neighbors having problems, let Mike or I know, we'll get on each one of those, like, I got a whole stack of cards, and I'm happy to give that out. Um, second is, and this sounds a little bit kind of like a bumper sticker, but rural broadband is what we do. Um, we do serve twenty-three states across the US, but if you look at our map, we don't serve, uh, all of those states, we serve pieces and parts of those states. We don't generally serve what we call NFL cities. Uh, we do serve Kansas City, Kansas is probably the most urban environment we serve. You look at our footprints, we serve rural environments, they're not as, as hilly in some cases as this, but they're still rural, so this is stuff we know and it's in the view. So again, we're going to take a little bit of a look in the future, what happens if there's a positive public vote? Before I do that, I'm going to talk a little bit about what, what you're getting for your bond money. What you'll be getting is a brand new network. Today, all of the connections in town, with a handful, all of the connections served by us, is served over copper connections. Copper's a pretty good technology, uh, within limits, but it's a mechanical connection, I like to call it, it's susceptible to things like rain and water and wind and cold, and it takes continual perpetual upkeep. What we're talking about here is a complete overlay of everything in the town, and we will serve one hundred percent of the town, including Little Michigan. I have stared a lot of, spent a lot of time staring at Little Michigan over the last couple of weeks, especially I had a meeting with the select board earlier this week, uh, with a brand new network. This is a fiber optic network, we've got some samples of what fiber optic cable looks like over there, I'd encourage you to take a look at it. Fiber optic is small, thin strings of glass. Inside that glass, we shoot light through it, we make internet work with light. Today, it's over electrical impulses. One of the benefits of fiber from our perspective is, it's either on or it's off. Kind of the third rail for us for trouble is static dial tone and intermittent VSL connectivity. Kind of got to start at the beginning, work your way all the way to the end to find out, you know, did Sparky the squirrel chew through a cable somewhere that's now being wet? That's the kind of stuff we have to work with. With fiber, it's like, it's either on or it's off. So, if something happens in your home, uh, the guy takes out a little meter, call it OTDR, he plugs the fiber into it and says, guess what, there's been a fiber cut three hundred and sixty-two feet away from you. He walks three hundred and sixty-two feet, looks for the backhoe, and he's found a fiber cut. So, from a reliability perspective, fiber is orders of magnitude more reliable than, uh, than copper. Copper's great technology, but fiber's just more reliable. It also has vastly more capacity. The RFP that the select board put forth was a one gig symmetrical network, that's one thousand megabits per second in both directions, that's the capability of the network. Today, town average is probably somewhere around seven megabits per second, seven, seven and a half, ten, somewhere in the range. Some people in town are getting faster than that, some people in town are getting slower. This has an off-the-shelf day-one capability of a thousand megabits per second. Talk a little bit about kind of what's going on later, uh, but I want to talk about Ridge specifically. You can't read this, uh, but what this is a diagram of is what that network looks like, kind of at a fifty thousand foot view. On the left-hand side, you have the house. Inside the house, we'll, inside or outside the house, we'll place one of two pieces of equipment. Uh, a key differentiator between copper and fiber is, this is a powered service, it requires AC power inside the house. Excuse me, this could be a downside, again, full transparency. Dial tone today, uh, if your power goes out, if you have a wired phone, you can pick the phone up and get dial tone. With fiber optic service, if you lose power to your house, you will not have dial tone, unless you put a battery backup with the device, and we, uh, we offer battery backups, they charge, it's thirty or thirty-five bucks, I think they're super reasonable, that will hold your battery up or hold your phone up for twenty-four hours. If you have a generator, plug it into a wired generator outlet, you get the same kind of power you normally have, it's no issue with phone service at all, but just full transparency, independent power outage, that's one of the downsides of fiber. So, you'll see examples of what we put on the house, there's two different kinds, one is an outdoor unit, if you have power on the outside, um, where we can plug into it, it's easier to get access, we put an outside unit, it's, it looks exactly like what you have today, just a little bit bigger. Um, if you don't have that, then we bring the fiber all the way into your house, we have a much smaller unit, um, and what those two devices do is convert light to regular cable or wireless inside your house, that's all they do. They, they translate from a light signal to however you transmit through your house, whether it's wa- cable inside your walls or wireless signal. In, uh, Ridge, we will build this network in two different directions. The majority of the town is served from the Ridge central office, which is a place here in town that has fiber connectivity coming to it from a couple of different directions, and we do that for redundancy. Wherever possible, we always build, uh, to key locations fiber from two directions, this is another reason why fiber's a little more resilient than copper in a lot of cases, if, so, we call them rings. So, you have Ridge central office sits here, we have fiber going two different directions, if the fiber gets cut, the traffic automatically reroutes the other direction, so it's a little bit more resiliency. Uh, there are primary switching areas that we put electronics in. For this town, we'll show you a map in a second, the vast majority of the town will be served out of the Ridge central office. Some also come, come out of Jaffrey though. It's easier for us and more efficient for us just to feed it out of Jaffrey, be done, we do this kind of stuff all the time. From there, then, your traffic goes out of its internet traffic, we route it in redundancy, either to Burlington, Vermont, or Portland, Maine, those are the two primary locations where all of the carriers are in Northern New England. From there, you know, we stretch out and go to different places, so we try to build redundancy as much as possible. At a little more granular level, you can't see this either, um, but we'll, this will, I'm sure at some point, this will be available for everybody to look at, we've given the select board in the topic, we're going to get a couple of different versions of this, one version gives you the ability to drill down pretty, pretty granularly. This is what the backbone networks looks like. So, we talked about two point, uh, two point six million, I believe, in a bond for the town, two point five million for Consolidated. The way that splits out is, the bond builds this, that's what your two point six million builds. We're adding, um, I, I forgot what I'm adding, it's like a hundred and sixteen miles of fiber, so a hundred and sixteen miles of fiber optic cable, again, we're overlaying an entirely brand-new network. What you don't see here, this is all backbone fiber, what we call middle mile, because there are big fibers that are coming and connecting to the main locations. Off of each one of those are your homes and businesses. From those connections to the homes and business, that's what we fund. So, we'll put in the fiber for you, we'll put the equipment inside of the house, we'll do the installation, the bond builds this. Of the cost of this bond, about ninety-two percent of it is building fiber. That remaining eight, eight percent or so is in the electronics. When we build these types of networks, and we've built a lot of these networks in the past, the expensive part is the fiber. And the good news is, this is, uh, something, again, another positive for fiber, it's future proof. Once fiber goes in, you have the ability to, instead of ripping or replacing the entire network, which is essentially what we're, we're suggesting here, uh, if you need to go faster in the future, it's swapping out a lot of low-cost electronics, so you can go faster and faster as the technology evolves. So, this is what you buy for your bond for two point six million dollars, more than a hundred miles of fiber optic cable. Uh, I want to talk a little bit about then, what it looks like as we're installing these. Um, the way this works is really for us, it's in a four-step process. The first thing you do is, uh, we start building the network, and what you couldn't see on there, um, are the specific sub-areas in each one of these, uh, in each one of the, the fiber areas. When we install these networks, we'll install, I think, eight to ten boxes called splitter cabinets. So, if you drive around today, you may see some of our copper here today, they're about the size of a dorm fridge, it, it, um, mounts on a telephone pole, as a general rule, it's where all of our copper cables come to. Fiber's kind of designed the same way, we use totally different equipment. So, a splitter cabinet is about the size of a dorm fridge, it mounts on a telephone pole, we use eight to ten of them when we, when we finally build. Um, we'll, we'll give you another map at some point that's going to show those areas color-coded. We don't call it phases, um, there are eight to ten color-coded areas where we'll build into. We don't call them phases, because when we build, we may bring in multiple crews and start in different directions and build toward the center. Chesterfield is an example, we built ninety-two miles of fiber in Chesterfield in about six weeks. We had two crews, one started in Spofford, the other started in Bradaville, and they built toward the center. We'll do something similar here. When we turn up those splitter areas, so we mount the splitter cabinet, we build the backbone fiber, then we do, and these are customer drops, um, so what will happen is, vote hopefully is positive, um, we start, the, the bond work gets done, we start network construction, you're going to see all manner of activity, you're going to see fiber crews all over the place, everybody gets real excited because fiber just went past my house, but when can I work? We have a little bit more work to do. The next step is what's called splicing, it takes about as long as installing a fiber. That's where the technicians, if you open a splitter cabinet, you'll see big fiber coming in, and there's a port for every single customer, where an individual, they're in the fiber bundle of them for spares, will go out to each individual customer. We're going to do that work, too, that takes another six to eight weeks as a general rule. We then usually have about two weeks or so of testing, we don't just turn a box in, plug it in, and say, service is ready, dispatch and cap. We test service, and then we open the area up. What you shouldn't expect if we want to do this is, hey, we're going to do the entire build for the entire town, then we'll start taking orders. What we do is start taking orders as splitter cabinet areas get turned up. So you'll see eight to ten phases through Ridge. The way that will work is, usually six to eight weeks before we're ready to open up the first splitter cabinet area, we'll give you a website. Um, it's going to probably be consolidated.com forward slash Ridge, that doesn't exist today, so if you go there, it's not going to work. Um, but six to eight weeks before we turn up the first splitter cabinet area, we'll start distributing information, saying, hey, pre-signups are ready to go. We want to get as many people pre-signed up as possible, because once those splitter cabinet areas turn up and are ready for service, those smaller subdivision areas, we'll start going through and contacting you back and saying, okay, let's set up an appointment time. Those appointments are a two-step process. Uh, you generally don't need to be home for the first, but you will need to be home for the second. What we like to do is, we look down, picking a street, Maple Street, right, we have eighteen pre-signups on Maple Street, we want to send a crew, we want to do all of the outside work at one time down Maple Street, and we'll come back in just, uh, to do the inside work to minimize the time, uh, amount of time that you need to be home. So, the pre-signups, um, are super important for us, because it helps us get more people installed faster. Um, so, here's what the install looks like from a pocketbook perspective, uh, as a general rule, and, and I'm going to kind of cut to the chase, there is one. Uh, for fiber service, there's no installation fee, you don't have to pay for equipment, you don't have to pay for the technician. We really want you to be on fiber. Um, generally, you, once we install fiber, it's so reliable, we don't care for customers anymore. I hate that, because I like caring for customers, but it's usually a happy thing, the speed's so fast. Um, we don't, we rarely get trouble to get us off customers with fiber, so we want to get customers, as many customers for fiber as we can, we want to make it as easy as possible, there's no front installation charge. There's a couple of things that you need to be aware of, uh, if you have a very, very long, uh- If you have a very, very long lane from the last telephone pole in front of your house to your house, if you have poles up today, we'll put it up for free. If you don't have poles up today, and you have an underground buried service where there's a conduit and a pole rope, so we can fire it through to your house, no charge. If you don't have a pole rope, we'll use the existing copper to pull that cable through. If you have nothing, there may be some, some cost for you, because you'll have to get a conduit installed. Generally, that conduit is, is going to have a pole rope and we'll pull it through. So if you have aerial service, if you have service from us today, as a general rule, it's not going to be any upfront charge. If you have buried service, and with no conduit, there may be something there. If you think you're in that situation, or you have questions about that, catch Mike and I, and we can do a lot more deep, deeper discussion. As a general rule, most customers aren't going to see any upfront charge. Pricing, I hate this slide. I hate this slide because your mileage may vary. Pricing depends on what services you want, what service mix you have, if you want to assign it for a term agreement, if you don't want a term agreement, if you want to use your own equipment, if you don't want to use our equipment. So what I'm showing you here is some really high-level ballpark, average schedule, general rule stuff, right? So on the top line there, you see our base rate pricing. If you just want to buy 50 meg internet access with nothing else, I want no phone service, I want nothing else, I'm not going to agree to a term, I just want you to install internet service, you're going to pay around 74 bucks a month. Nobody pays 74 bucks a month for internet access. They usually bundle with something, or they say, I'll keep it for a year, or I won't use your equipment, I'm going to use my own, all those things lower it down. It's kind of the worst-case scenario. Under our current front-low rates today, again, this is representative sample, that 70, that $50, 70, 50 meg, $74 price point goes down to about 64. General rule, again, kind of giving you some ballpark pricing. Phil and Tim talked about the infrastructure fee. So that is essentially what repays the bond. The infrastructure fee would go on the base for any customer who has broadband data service on the fiber optic network, would go above your current pricing, so you're going to pay 950 more a month. So that, again, ballpark direction of pricing, that 50 meg would go to about 72.95, that's all-in minus any tax, which helps with tax, but if there's tax, it's everything included, full bubble wax. Here's the general rule. If you're at 50, if you're 25 meg or below today, and you put fiber optic service in, you're going to probably be able to double or triple your speed and pay about the same price you'd pay today. It's a general rule. When we move customers over in these overbuild scenarios, we don't charge early termination fees or any of that stuff, because we want you to be on a new network. General rule, what I've seen across the board, most customers can move up in speed by increments, quite a few increments, you'll pay about the same. If you want one gig service, great, more power to you, you can have one gig service. There aren't a lot of use cases for one gig out there, but I'm one of those guys that had access to it. So pricing varies, it's all over the place, depending on, you know, what kind of service mix you have. I will tell you though, that we, we always offer promotional rates. One of the questions I get pretty regularly in these discussions is, well, you know, a year from now, you're going to share all those rates on us. We're not. And we're not for a couple of reasons. One is, in the agreement that we'll have with the select board, we guarantee that the rates in Ridge will be the same rates that we have across the state in New Hampshire. I have 100,000 fiber passings in the state of New Hampshire right now, nearly all of those are competitive. If I would jack rates up across the state, I'd lose all my customers. So I can't do that. You're going to get the same rates of fiber customers in Portsmouth, Salem, and I forget, it's just that simple. We always offer promotional rates. That's the high level. Trying to keep it short. So want to open for questions? Anyone else can be covered?
Since this is a public hearing, I just want to grab the people who signed up first. And... We all settled this for now?
Oh, yeah.
Is there anybody else who wants to sign up to ask questions, make comments, ratings? If we can go through that order. Did also have for us to keep a record as to who was at the meeting and who spoke. I saw the first name on the list was John Varnell Johnson, founder of the Tell-Tec Committee, he signed up, he might want to make four comments, and he wants to have questions.
Can I just come later?
Sure. Next I have...
I've tried to turn off.
How about the top one?
Okay. Next I have Jim Wayley.
Yes, Jim Wayley. Tough question. You talked about 100% overlay of the whole town. So the fact that the Astros put fiber down on the street I live on, is it relevant to lay new fiber there anyway?
Yeah, we actually looked at that pretty carefully on what's the right thing to do there, and we have, we have a fair amount of fiber in the network today. When we bought the Fairpoint asset, there were two things that we really were pretty impressed with, first was the people and the experience, and second was the fiber network. There is a ton of fiber in Ridge and New Hampshire today. What there aren't are those on and off-ranks, which is what we're building here. So in that case, it actually is more effective and efficient for us just to put new fiber in and be done.
Okay. Second question. You talked about covering everybody, 100%.
Including a little Michigan, just for the record. Including a little Michigan.
Including a little Michigan, right. I've got some friends that live on six tenths of a mile along Pride Road. Down the end of that road, there's one other house on. They're currently consolidated, subscriber, which must mean they have copper to the house. I don't know the circumstances regarding poles or conduit or whatever, I don't know that. But are you going to cover them? They would like to know if it would be everybody.
Yeah, so the, the question for the, for the audience, the question is, will we cover everybody? Does everybody mean everybody? Everybody means everybody. We'll cover them all. Chesterfield's a good example of that. We have a lot of private, there are roads in Chesterfield, we cover them all. In fact, we actually have an optical nid mounted on a tree in one spot. They have power there, but there's an optical nid mounted on a tree. Everybody means everybody.
Okay, so you also mentioned, if there's a pole within some distance of the house, or this conduit, is it pole rope?
Yeah.
Or conduit, we have copper so that you can pull the fiber through. You talked about first 150 feet free, and then, then what, 55 cents a foot for how long?
So the, the question is, in what circumstance would you have a charge for conduit? So if there's an existing conduit and, and there's no pole rope and there's existing service in, we can use the copper to pull through. The rare instance is going to be, there's a conduit there and, or a trench, you know, we would have a trench or something like that. Very, very, very rare instance, but we would like to call it out. If that would ever happen, if it's 55 cents a foot beyond the first 150 feet. I can tell you though, Mike and I have had this discussion, I don't know, we just go do it as a general rule. The rule really those that 55 cent beyond the 100, or beyond the first 150 feet mirrors what the state requires us to charge, or supposed to charge for traditional voice service. So we mirrored those. I'm hard-pressed to think we'll ask them to charge your customer for a drop, Mike, you know, but then...
No, we have. And there's been the few instances where a pipe has been, we couldn't get through it, the customer wanted it buried, and that's a little bit different, it's a special bill. But just to add to Rob's, if there's poles going to the house, we're going to run it and there's no charge. If the customer has a pipe and we can get through it, we're going to run it at no charge.
Okay, so you think it's highly likely that they already have copper service to their house, that you guys are going to be able to install with no charge?
Correct.
Very unlikely that you wouldn't be able to.
Very unlikely that we would be able to.
Well, tell me. Thank you.
And add on to that, ground a card, if you don't already have my contact information, and if they want to reach out to either Mike or I, we can have somebody come and take a look at it as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, next on the list I'd add, okay? Just speaking, I just wrote...
I'll think. Two questions. You had three rates in the first column, your base rate, then promotional rate.
Right.
So we look at the promotional rate, we decide that's first.
Correct.
If you, after two years and you back out, what do you do? I mean, they go back to copper, or what happens?
So the question is, what happens after two years, I'm asking quite a lot, if they back out?
Right.
Doesn't want service anymore?
They don't want the fiber out there.
So there's going to be a transition period, right? At some point, we're going to want to take the fiber, take the copper out totally. That day is not today, it's not tomorrow. We've done these fiber overbuilds in the past, generally a number of years. The regions have a maintenance tipping point, where it just doesn't make sense anymore to keep copper in. When that day comes, what we've generally done is gone to those handful of remaining customers that are left and said, hey, let's move you over to the fiber service, we'll make it economically neutral for you, you know, we'll give them a special promotional rate to wait that fee. If a customer is on fiber service and they say, I don't want, I don't want your internet service anymore, but I want to keep your voice, we'll leave the fiber out there, because we can deliver traditional voice over the fiber optic cable just like we can copper. So the goal is to keep moving as many people to fiber as we can.
And if the line comes in and it's to a pole, and it's buried to the house, but it's not in a conduit, that has to be dug up?
That, in that case, yeah, the homeowner would have to give us an access way in there one way or another. I would probably, and they call it transit for a reason, I would strongly recommend conduit, but there may be some of those situations. Most I think we would deal with on an individual subscriber basis. If you know those customers having contact with Mike around, we can figure out what's going on.
Thanks, Carl. Next I have Mary Ann Harper.
Mary Ann Harper.
I'm requesting that of everybody here next to me, please stay here for us.
I have a two-part question, one, a question for the board, and one, a question for consolidated. So my question to the board is, when you were talking about affecting the, your tax rates, and if everybody gets it and all the values go up, I was, I didn't get a clear understanding as to whether this is going to be an assessed item per home, for instance, if one person has it and one person doesn't.
I asked this question today, I have an answer here.
So we don't, we don't assess for utilities to, to the home, and the other thing, what Carl said is kind of, you know, convoluted. The only way that your assessments are going to go up...
See?
Huh?
I mean, I, go ahead.
Anyway, so the only way that people's assessments are going to go up is because everybody's house values go up. It's not going to happen in 2020, because we're in a rebuild year this year. In 2025, if our property value sales go up, it does, it floats the boat. I mean, everybody's go up, but then our tax rate does go down, but your property values are not going to go up because now, your assessments, excuse me, your assessment value is not going to go up, which is what you're taxed on simply because you now have internet.
So you're saying it's based on sale price and not on an assessed item, correct?
Correct.
Everybody's phones going up.
Your house may be more saleable?
Yeah, I understand. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a separate assessment item.
That's a name over there that's coming.
Yeah, that's coming through. My second question is for consolidated, and the question is, you know, we have Y Valley in town, and we have Argent in town, I don't know if we have anything else besides those three providers, but is there a certain timeframe where you'll be allowed to hook up to the fiber network at no cost, and then if you decide, you know, a year or two later that you want to, there will be a cost? That's the way it was when Y Valley did the Fast Roads grant, as long as you signed up within a certain amount of time, there wasn't an installation charge. And now, if you would want to get onto that broadband fiber, even if it goes right past your house, the installation charge is really high. So my question is, is there going to be a grace period, or is it going to expire on this pre-signup or signup? How's that work?
So the question is, will the installation, is the installation fee in the pricing temporary just through, through the initial period? Any interest? No. So I was fortunate enough to be with the company for, I am fortunate to be with the company for more than 20 years. Actually launched our first fiber optic services in Texas with Mike back in 2006. We didn't charge install fees then, we're going to charge install fees today, obviously changing the times then.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is that it, Mary Ann? Thank you. Bill, can I get it up here?
Hi, I'm Bill Gunther. First of all, I'd like to commend the board for moving so quickly on this, to allow us to have a vote coming spring. And also like those from Phil's committee as well. I went to their public hearing in October, and it looked like they had done an immense amount of work, but obviously since then, even more. So again, thanks for doing that. My, my question is along, just to try to get a better understanding of the relationship we're getting into between the town and CCI. And I think Tim had a little bullet on this slide, is I've talked about another contract for maintaining the network once it's installed. Also, in the contract, I saw something about if CCI was to go bankrupt, you know, what happens in that case? You know, in the contract, it says something along the lines that the company that takes over the network, but then have the responsibility to continue the service. But I'm not sure I understand that as well, so I wonder if either the board or CCI can find out.
Rob, no, specifically because he was asked that a couple days ago.
So the question is kind of what's the nature of relationship? We break these agreements really into three basic parts. So if you look at the agreement, you're going to see really three basic documents. First is kind of a general master service agreement that talks about, you know, all the general legal stuff, legal obligations. The second is the network construction contract. So that's an agreement to use the bond funds for us to come in and actually physically construct the network for the town. That gives you the basic asset. The third agreement is an operating agreement, and they really work in, and just, it's cleaner to break it up into separate sections. So, you know, this, these are the terms that govern, you know, construction, and all those kinds of things. These are the terms that govern operation of the network. The operation of the network, at the end of the day, really means we run the network like we normally run networks. When it breaks at 2 o'clock... System extension, we're on the hook for that. There's no further obligation for the town. I, I've been using the analogy lately of a water treatment plant, and I've seen a lot of instances of this, where a town will build a water treatment plant, they'll hire a third party to come in and run it. It's almost the same thing. In this case, the town was going to hire us to build a water treatment plant, then they're going to hire us to come back in and run it again. In the event of default, so really, a couple of things could happen in the event of default. And default really is a Chapter 7 or Chapter 11 bankruptcy on our market. I'm going to hit Chapter 7 real quick. Chapter 7 is complete liquidation. In our space, that really doesn't happen, because we're considered, we have legal obligations around being the provider of last resort for dial tone. We're required to deliver dial tone everywhere. We're governed by state and federal regulators, so it's really not possible for us to file Chapter 7 liquidation and just walk away. What would happen in that case is state or federal regulators would appoint a receiver to somebody who'd come to run the network. Chapter 11 happens. In the event of Chapter 11, we're going to do a reorganization. Really, there's a couple of, a couple of paths that the relationship would go down. The town would either write it out and say, okay, you got to continue providing services the same way you have, regardless of what kind of reorganization you're going through, and we would just move down the road. In my opinion, probably the most common course, and the hopefully unlikely event in Chapter 11 would ever happen in 20 years is a long time. Second option, the town would have in the event of Chapter 11, is that they could put the network back out for video, and you could get other ISPs. And I can tell you, we've, we've bid a lot of these, we've never not seen a competitor there. So there are people that would be interested tomorrow in coming in and taking a fully functional network asset and saying, yep, we'll run that. Part of the contractual obligation too, is the way we're constructing the network is designed for that consolidation. So not only in the event of default in chapter 11, but also the operating agreement terminates in, in, you know, so many years, the period of bond at the minimum, the town at that point will have the ability to bid the network back out again. So contractually, we're building the network so that in 20 years or whatever, if the town chose to bid out and another ISP came and said, hey, we're going to run the network instead, it's unplug here, plug in here, it's a little more complex than that, but as simple, as technically simple as we can make it, ask somebody to take that. That's what we're doing.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, we've got a proposal for a contract. We went over it the other day quite thoroughly, only two hours. We had someone on the camera and Rob with questions.
Good, appreciate it.
Very similar to what you're asking right now. This line, he knew the answer to your question specifically. What he didn't mention is that within the contract, it includes service to public buildings within the town, public apartments, which would be the highway, police, fire, town office, library, but would exclude school. They use different types of software as that is not really something that's going to be useful. Well, as I'm twisting, contracts said basic service to all town buildings and it went for basic service at what, 15 meg?
Yeah.
No, one gig.
Excellent.
It didn't take a lot of, I'm twisting.
They're good.
Excellent, Rob, you have fun with that. So the town offices are going to get one gig of service for it. All right, that's all the names I had on the list, but I'm welcome to let anybody else ask questions or comment if they want. I'll handle it. You know what I'm going to do? I'm just going to go from front to back, okay? Does the hand clean up all at once?
I have a quick one.
And state your name, please.
Ashley Star, from Illinois, and also Kiera Rosen. The slide with the pricing, it had, you know, 15, 50, one gig. Are those synchronous up and down or are those down?
Those are all synchronous. The question is, are the, were the speeds that we displayed synchronous? And they are. So synchronous means the same speed in both directions. Those aren't the only packages we offer. Those are common packages. Generally, we'll see most customers kind of centering in 1500 that package. We'll get a handful, go to the one gig. But frankly, I think again, really what you're going to find is if you're at 25 meg or below today, you move up to 50 meg package and be about the same. But they are all synchronous. Do a lot of video conferencing or uploading a lot of documents or if you're a photographer or a videographer or a doctor, those are, those are going to be real useful to you.
Where can you, if you're over four, want to file a story?
As long as it's a good story.
Ashley learned something about stories. Ashley called me and interviewed me about something before she got off the line. I said, okay, now I'm going to interview you. I asked her about her circumstances and what you remember and she just sounded like I'm going to work.
Well, right now, it takes about 40 minutes for me to upload like 15 photos to a story and it's, it's pretty good.
So I sold the report. Let's move towards the back. Do we have hands? Looks like, and...
Yeah, Danny Dickler. Danny Dickler. And first, I want to mirror the earlier comments. A huge thank you to Town Tech, the board, and to Consolidated for working together so seamlessly to bring this wonderful opportunity to us. Our vision as a town is to have a rural, small-town character. And I don't know how else we can achieve that without this type of organic capability. We need to attract companies that preserve our scenic beauty, not those that are land-intensive and destroy it. So I think it's very important that we have this. Now, my question though for the committee is, we have what, a month or so until the residents of Ridge vote on this? And we don't have 60% here today. So there's a lot of people who are going to hear about it, from neighbors, from Facebook pages, from things that may or may not be accurate. How are you going to get the 60% to vote in favor of it?
I know somebody has an answer.
Oh, go ahead.
I don't have the answer, but Susan Wessels, I had talked to her and I was hoping to bring it up with the board tonight about doing a mailer. We do a voter information, you know, the voter's guide, but I think that this is so important that I was hoping to convince the board that we should pay for a postcard mail or a half sheet rigid. I mean, and Susan did create a really, you know, nice one. Of course, I know the problem is that the post office, every one of them goes into the round fire. I mean, it's just, you know, it's like everything, it's mailed out. It's when people have P O boxes, man, it's just, they never take anything home. So getting to them is going to be an issue, but yeah, no, it's, yeah. I hope that we can come up with a plan for that.
I'll let you continue on a second. I think there's two other venues, the cameras.
Yeah.
And maybe through the internet power. The town report, website, Facebook, might give some information because you are going to put out the video with this.
Right now, what I'm doing is I'm live streaming this and it, it does take some time to change the format so that YouTube will accept it. But I did it at the last deliberative session, so I just never know what the quality of the video is going to be until I get home. I'm using an Air card. The Wi-Fi here wasn't strong enough, so. And, you know, it dropped, it dropped me one or two times in the beginning. It's, it seems to have settled out now. It's just, I don't know what it's like until I see it.
The second method would be with Holly Kroski who has, like, very often to share her video with Holly. So maybe they are also, I'm sure there'll be comments and questions on both of those Facebook pages.
Well, the best way to be would be to put it up on YouTube, then we can all download it and you can put it on the town website.
So that's one. What did you have that's already, you want to continue?
Yes, I think people are more apt to believe and trust people they know and they talk to. I think if we could organize a group, we could either be at the transfer station to hand out brochures, the mailers, so that people again answer questions. We can also go door to door and let people know about it. So I think it's a matter of how, how many people can we muster and how much work can we do.
I think we probably have science too, or we have some more data for number two.
Get it out there.
Thank you. How about the hands, go backwards a bit. Go on.
Paula Phillips. I'm very optimistic and let's say this passes. There's three other towns that seem like right in line with us. What is going to be your potential capability of servicing, getting everybody online if all these towns say, do it?
That's a great question. So the question is, if all four towns vote at the same time, are we going to get bond fund, bond funded at the same time? Can we do all those at once? So Chesterfield, use Chesterfield example, they're Chesterfield was about 2,000 passings. We started that construction in July of this year. We sent the first customers up in October and we finished all of them in December. Whole town's open right now. Yeah. So size is not that far off. Right now, the four towns that are coming through the bonding cycle, there's about eight or nine thousand total passings. So it's, you know, four or five times. We just finished doing this exact same thing in the state of New York last year. We built 22,000 fiber passings in about 12 to 14 months. So I'm not worried about that.
All right, I'm heading backwards a little.
Carol McLeod. Is the library, is a town building going to get one gig too?
Well, it's guaranteed as one gig for all town buildings, town apartments, state or, in the contrary.
It, no extra charge or?
No charge.
No charge.
Right, Rob?
Yes, correct.
We recorded that.
Okay.
Rob has the ability to change the wording with the contract.
One other thing. It's not a town building, but the historical society is associated with the town. I'm just wondering what we could get too.
Get an extension off the library.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's kind of a tricky one.
Yeah.
We need it.
Yeah, well, no, it's the relationship because the town actually pays the historical society $4,100 a year. I don't know how it fits, like, and it's never changed in 100 years, but because they store a lot of town records, that's right. And artifacts and historical documents, so they're, they're a custodian.
Yes.
There we go.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay, great. No, I'm just going to start right now.
Let me answer this, Cal. We probably work with Cal on that.
Okay.
He seems to be more content than I am.
Okay.
We need it.
Okay.
I have Dan Jamison. We're new to town, so got a few questions on how the voting and stuff works. It's more for the town. I really, you know, this isn't the greatest thing I've heard since I moved into town if we could do this. I would kind of want to do my part to make sure it works. So as far as the town meetings and the vote, do people register to vote when they show up? Do they have to register to vote ahead of time?
Day of voting registration in the future.
Okay. And then, as you said, 60% has to pass. Is that 60% of total registered voters?
No.
60% of those who vote.
Of those who vote, then, okay.
So the encouragement would be if you really don't have to feel about this one way or another, don't vote now, just don't vote. Because it's only the people who cast the vote on that warrant whose vote counts towards the 60%.
I got you.
To do your best if you want to register to vote, to go to the town office and register to vote, we'll go there, same-day registration.
Hopefully, there's going to be a line for that.
Doesn't take very long, but it's already registered.
Yeah, the supervisors vote, they're going to be Tuesday, is it next Tuesday?
The 21st, yeah.
The 21st, yeah, that's to town office.
Right, for one half hour.
Yeah. But every day that the town clerk is open, you can register to vote. So that's more convenient. And you can vote the same day, but we will have a lot of registrations.
Right.
So if you do it ahead of time, it'll be faster.
All right. And with that, is there, is this vote, is there, there's a lot more going on that day, right? It's not just this thing, it's a whole bunch of different warrant articles and things that's going on as well?
Yeah, and just, if you haven't been here, we still call it town meeting, but we do paper ballots. We're called SB2, so everything's done on ballot. It's not like this, you know, where, you know, we talk things out.
Yeah.
Well, to address your question, we have what's called a Craig Clark. We have a deliberative session, which is February 1st, from nine in the morning to whenever it's done. And we will sit and go through each and every different warrant article that is on the warrant for the town. We will discuss it. Some of the warrant articles may be amended based upon what they contain, but then we go to the voting, which is March 12th.
March 10th.
So the 10th, we actually vote. We vote where you actually register your vote. It used to be a town meeting town where we would have a town meeting in March where we would vote on everything, but we've become an SB2 town. So what we have is a deliberative session in February where we discuss everything. And then we have the actual vote in March where we actually vote what our position is on over to the warrant articles.
And offices, yeah, that's when the offices are, are, are elected?
But don't start me at SB2.
Yeah.
Since we mentioned it, let's go through some of the dates. What's your session be February 1st?
Nine o'clock at RMS.
The school, at the Reginald Memorial School, 9:00 a.m. All right? That goes for as long as it takes. I don't want Roberto and I have to leave to go somewhere else that day. We already have to appoint someone else. February 11th, Tuesday, and 7, 7/7. At Ridge Memorial School is the federal primaries. And March 10th, we have the town vote, the Reginald Memorial School for 7/7. So those are the voting days and the meeting days.
May I add something else to this, publicists?
Go on.
Okay, Craig Clark. One of the things that Phil didn't really talk about is we sent out 10 requests for proposals, but we only received two back. Some of the comments I have addressed on Facebook were, why can't Comcast come to town? Comcast and the other larger cable companies are really not doing a lot of investing in rural areas like ours. We were lucky that we got Chesterfield Cable 35 years ago. Up at that point, all of our television delivery here in Ridge was by over-the-air TV. The FCC has allowed all of the cable or the TV companies now to go to UHF frequencies, which are much higher, so we don't get the reception, which is predictive, you really do need to have a cable system. But the question's been asked, why didn't, why didn't Comcast? Well, we, we contacted Comcast about 15 years ago. We had them come in, one of this major people in the New England area came down here, we took them through town, showed them everything that we had, and they expressed no interest. Argent did not respond to the RFP either. And I called them and I said, you know, we have this out there, why didn't you respond? Never heard back. But if I remember correctly, Argent did make a proposal for Chesterfield. They were one of, there were five proposals for Chesterfield, did I remember it correctly? Five, five different options. And Argent did. Why they didn't respond to our RFP, I can't answer that question. But I wanted to put that out there because it was part of some of the things that I have answered people's questions on Facebook to try and let them know what's going on and why we went the direction that we did. The Y Valley option did not cover the whole town. If I remember correctly, it was 97% of the town and not everybody would have had the kind of speeds that Rob was talking about. My background is RF communications. I've been a radio hand for 52 years now. So my field is targeting RF. And I started to use all kinds of megahertz, gigahertz. This really hurts to Bob's detriment at one of, at one of our hearings. But the basic thing about Y Valley is because they're using radio waves, when they use different frequencies, they don't have the same kind of carrying capabilities. The higher the frequency you go, the more data you can push through. The lower frequencies, you have slower speeds. And Y Valley's proposal just didn't really cover the kinds of things that we wanted, which is why we selected CCI. But I wanted to put that out there just to make sure everybody understood the thinking that we went through while we were doing the deliberations with the two proposals that we had. All in all, for technology, for the future, for the kind of capability that people in Ridge are looking for, the fiber to home makes far more sense than using wireless or some other technologies like cable. Cable's an old technology, it's 50-plus years old. We had a cable system when I went to college back in the early 70s. It was, it was a good system, but it didn't give you the kind of technology that you have now today. So I'm just going to put that out there for everybody. And I won't make it worse.
Yeah. Because he didn't, he said RF, so if he didn't know it was radio, radio frequencies. I'm sorry, yeah.
That's an apple.
All right, you did it right here. And one, comment over here?
Holly Kroski, I just wanted to, I'm curious, you mentioned about doing mailing. Is it possible to get this mailing done in time to send it out with the voter's guide?
No, you want it separate. Too many people throw those out. We're hoping to, you know, it's, it's different than, I mean, there's going to be something in the voter's guide, obviously.
We did that crime watch, we had a sheet put in there and save the mail on the vice foot.
I know, but, you know, it's, well, you're the one that brought attention to those things. Most of us, I mean, people stand there and just, you know, if it's not first-class mail, it's in their own files. So pulling them back out and using the transfer station is a good idea.
Maybe one day, when tax collectors let a hangover home, they may be able to do that.
Don't do that.
Don't do that. No.
Let's go back to the beginning a little further. John, John Bonnell?
John Bonnell, I'm the secretary to this committee. We moved here, I'm brand new too. We moved here six years ago. And the first thing I asked our neighbor was, what the heck? And he said, well, maybe you should be on this committee. And so I joined the committee. I'm the non-technical person on the committee. And I've got to say that the first, so we've lived here six years, I think I joined the committee not long after that. But after 15 years of listening to these guys talk about the technology, it got really discouraging going through the history of all the different companies that have come in and out and in and out, kind of like our internet service. So, and to me, the important thing is education. The students in this town are going to class mostly to ask questions and get one-on-one help. They're going to either now or in the near future be getting a lot of their information through videos or just things that require a lot of bandwidth. One of the things that's driven me nuts with the internet is that I might have a great connection. They said, well, connect directly with your modem and shut off all your stuff, you'll get really great speeds. Well, my stuff does a lot of stuff that I don't know about in the background.
Apple.
And the, what, what, you know, how many of you use Alexa? Oh, thank goodness, it's a really smart group here. But all of these things happen in the background, so this is preparing us... So this is preparing us for, um, you know, if you, if your home is being monitored in some way, uh, for good or for ill, uh, this'll, this'll do help that in the background, both download and upload speeds that can be terribly bogged down. And it's not the fault of your current system, it's that the technology is, uh, growing. And it will continue to do so. So I really see this as a, uh, I just, in the last year or so, when Tim and the others on the committee started coming up with a real possibility, SB one-seventy, the, the bill made it possible for a corporation to not go broke providing else with the services really needed. So I wanna thank you all for being here, and if you have any questions, the committee, I know, will be very much available to answer any further questions.
If John, Tim, Phil, and Craig are all on the committee, well, you're in the middle of the asking all wants to, just for the action.
Yeah, and I'll just, um, mention, not everybody, you know, as I know, I'm one of the lucky few that has pretty high-speed internet at home. I know. Well, I can't wait for this to come in. I mean, I'm probably, you know, I'm one of the biggest supporters of it, no one's ever been, but I just got, because I do have high speed, C C I is now offering streaming TV services at much cheaper than, um, uh, Hulu, Hulu just went up twenty percent. I'm doing streaming now, uh, but, yeah, C C I's, um, you know, their basic, which is fine for me, is, you know, like twenty-five dollars a month. So, anyway, so when the fiber gets through, everybody will be able to also, you know, have competition in their streaming TV services, so.
Direct TV's all the way to my house.
Oh, well, yeah, I, yeah.
So that's a question from Rob. If you build the system, uh, will you also provide any television streaming?
It's here now.
Yeah, we, we offer.
I'm signing up for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have direct TV?
No, it's, um, it streams kinda like Google or Netflix, but it offers the full channel lineup, Nesson and all the other channels.
But you have to have at least, you wouldn't have gotten a postcard unless you have fifteen. Um, as far as speed, although my brother streams out in Arizona, you couldn't believe this season, he gets, his speed is like six. But he does stream there, it's like, you know, it's like, I'm going, this is not high-speed.
Well, I'm still a dial-up, so that doesn't matter.
I just wanted to point out, or ask one question, but I wanted to point out too, that, um, my wife and I have been fighting with select ones since about nineteen eighty-six so that we could get cable TV to our home. We fought with the cable company trying to get it to come up our street. So this isn't a new fight, I mean, to get better rates, better service or better. Cable TV, if you will, to my home, this, this has been going on with us for thirty years.
Well, yeah, I mean, here it is twenty.
Say your name please, ma'am.
Why do you have one? Uh, yeah, here it is twenty-twenty, and cable still hasn't come down our street. Not Argent, not just the bill, not whatever. We still do not have cable down here. Twenty-twenty.
I blame the B L S. Well, I have the question I have for Rob as well. In the periods that you have the fiber and you have the video service, you provide dial tone and the broadband, do you do it?
Triple, uh, triple-play bundle in those situations?
Yeah, the question is, do we do a triple-play bundle? That's why I hated that rising slide, because it was shown in kind of worst-case scenario, um, the more you buy from us, the better the experience can get. So there is double.
First of all, I apologize for my phone going off, it was off, you know? We have Y Valley right now. Are you gonna in, get into that?
Oh, into wireless?
No, no, we, with Y Valley.
Do you fiber?
Fiber. We have, we have fiber on Thomas Road.
Oh, on Thomas Road. Yeah, that was the question that came out earlier. Um, the fiber areas that are already have fiber today, when we're done, our service will be available as well. So you would have a choice between the Y Valley fiber or Consolidated fiber. You can do either one.
Great, thank you.
You got any further questions?
Um, sort of going on, that was, sorry, I'm, um, going on to that question. Since we bond SB one-seventy allows for bonding for what's unserved areas, does that mean that the areas where there already is fiber that may have that access, would that be at your cost?
It is, the, yeah, the question is, um, is, it, who pays for the areas that are already above that standard of twenty-five meg by three meg? And that's us, as part of the two-point-five million. Um, and it's not just in town here, it's not just the current fiber capable locations with fast roads. There are some copper DSL that go above twenty-five by three in some areas based on proximity for equipment. We back those out, the town doesn't pay for those, we pay for those, and we put fiber in everywhere.
So, Mark, a little quick question. Well, could you just ask if you're co-pilot there to hit show quickly those devices? You both just, you don't know what it is.
Co-pilot, yeah. Uh, no problem, I got it, I got it. So this, this would typically be an indoor application that you would see at your house. So this is very similar to probably what you may have today if you have our service. And when you opened up the, your current one, there's gonna be copper connections in there. What we do here is use this as a splice point. So we'll bring the fiber in from the pole and connect it here, and this would come into the basement, could come in right inside the house. And the technician will work that out with you. About ninety percent of our installs, we use this application. It's clean, it's neat, it's easy to get to. And as Rob had mentioned earlier on about the power. So with here, we're gonna have to plug this in as well with the other one. We're gonna have to plug it in somewhere to make it work. So in not every case, these will work, most will. This is the outdoor application, so a little, a lot bulkier. But in the back, it's a slack loop where we bring in the extra drop and call it up. It's, the fiber will come out and connect in the back, and your connections actually come out of here and we will run them in the house. So this is the, the old battery backup. The guys already had it mounted on it. I left it there. The new ones look very different, uh, but this would require power from outside the house or from, for us to get power from inside the house out. So typically, as Rob said, if there's not a plug outside somewhere close to where we can use it, we're typically gonna try to go inside and place the indoor unit. They both do the same thing with one exception. This one will deliver two phone lines. The other one, for a traditional pots, only delivers one. So, and there's other options on top of that. If you, we get an indoor, you decide you want it, we come back and put an outdoor. Or we've got a vote, a voice product that we can serve right off the router for your other phone.
This, this is our question. Strange one from these pots. Pots, something.
What, what you have today, thanks. Sorry about that. Any questions on the nits? So all of this is kind of outside. Yes, sir?
I'm Jim Whaley. Uh, I got the impression that the version with the battery backup has to go outside, is that?
No, the, 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 both versions can work on battery backup. So the battery backup, just instead of the, um, so power outlet on your wall, battery backup indoor unit or is the battery backup on the outdoor unit? It just goes to the home with you. Two more, I need your one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's real important for a lot of folks to have that battery backup, just in case the power goes out, they still have their phone service. And, and the last thing, if anybody's interested, I'll show the fiber. You guys are welcome to come on here. But I don't know if you've ever looked at a copper cable, but in, in this bundle is twelve separate fibers. So this would feed actually twelve different customers, not split one out. But if you guys, this would be a typical, what a splice would look like on a pole. So if you opened it up, those fibers are actually fused together with a laser, and that's what makes that connection on the poles. So if you guys wanna see it.
Voice contest?
Actually, the tensile strength's pretty strong. You can grab it and pull it, and it's really hard to break it. You, you bend it and put it, it, 'cause it is glass and you'll hear it. You know, if you listen really close, you can hear it break, but if you, if you bend it, very, very sharp it'll break, but the tensile strength's pretty strong.
I'm not referencing handpicked strength though.
It won't handle that.
All right, we're gonna try and wrap up this, this hearing, because we still have to do two more quick ones. Do we have any other really pertinent questions on this? We would encourage you to encourage your friends, if you want this, encourage them to vote yes on this particular one.
Yeah, especially people in the outlying areas, I'm, you know, it's like, what I kept calling the smallest twigs. It's like, instead of the tarts, but down around the lakes, down Lake Monahak, it took it, services to flow.
There are a few streets in center of town which are hyper-.
I have a little question and comments. I know the floor's gonna be covered here right now. Seven thirty-five. Really what we're gonna do is move forward.
Are we gonna do all?